I thought maybe before we look at the passage tonight, I would say just a couple of things about this song that we are singing. We got some younger kids and some young at heart kids as well in here uh tonight. And uh the uh the song uses this word quicken a lot. That's an old word. And I hate singing songs. I have no idea what they mean. I do try to uh define what the word quicken means at the very end of every one of those verses. Quicken me and make alive. To quicken is to make alive. Uh I get that word from Psalm 119. I don't know if you've ever read, that's the longest Psalm in the entire Bible. And uh in that over and over, we see this word quicken me. It is the idea of revive me. Put life again back into uh into my heart, to my life, uh such as Psalm 119 verse 25. My soul cleaves to the dust. Quicken thou me according to thy word. The Psalm writer is saying, I am faltering. I am fainting. Give me life. Have you ever been there? Are you there tonight? So the word quicken me or the prayer quicken me, make me alive is a prayer for revival. Now, because it's an old word, quicken, I decided to use the these and the thous in writing that. Uh I don't, I think that may be the only time I've ever done that in a song, but that's why I did that. Uh it just seemed to go better with with quicken. But the four verses are all uh speaking of Lord revive me. And if you want to know what the song is truly all about, it's the end, it's in that first verse. Lord of all sufficiency, I confess my need of thee. I need you, Lord. Make make me live again. Give me life again. Revive me. That's that prayer. Okay, that's the end of sermon number one. And let's go to sermon number two. This will be just a little bit longer one than that one, but uh we are encountering Jesus. We started this yesterday and I'd like us to go again tonight. Tonight though, let's go to the Gospel According to Luke. Alright, so did you choose that one? Okay, Gospel of Luke, chapter 10, Luke 10. My text tonight is going to be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the final five verses of Luke chapter 10. Here is when two sisters encounter Jesus. Okay, let me read this, Luke 10, verses 38 to 42. Now it came to pass as they, that's Jesus and his disciples, as they went, that he, Jesus, entered into a certain village. And a certain woman named Martha received him into her house. She had a sister called Mary, which also sat at Jesus' feet and heard his word. But Martha was cumbered about much serving and came to him and said, Lord, do you not care that my sister has left me to serve alone? Bid her therefore that she help me. Jesus answered and said unto her, Martha, Martha, now art careful, the word is anxious, you are anxious and troubled about many things, but one thing is needful. And Mary hath chosen that good part which shall not be taken away from her. The more you encounter Jesus, the more you listen to him. The more you value his teaching, the more you cherish his word. The more you encounter Jesus, the more you want him and what he has to say. Can I put it to you this way? You do not ignore the words of the people you love. If after this service tonight, you and I are talking, which I hope happens, but as we are talking, if my phone rings and it is my wife Bryn, I make you this promise, I will press pause on our conversation and I will take her phone call. I don't know what she needs, but I'm going to, you say, why would you do that? Don't you love me? Sure, I do. I happen to love her more. Out of all the people in my life, she outranks you. She has the highest priority. And that makes sense. I have reached a level of relationship with Bryn that I do not yet have with you. In fact, because I'm married to her, she and I are going to have a relationship that you and I will never have. Therefore, I'm not going to ignore when she wants to talk to me. Her words deserve my attention. I honor Bryn when I prioritize her. Again, you honor the words of the people you love. And that is at the heart of this encounter between Jesus and two sisters. So here's the story. One day, Jesus and his disciples enter into a small village. We know it's called Bethany from John chapter 11. He is welcomed into the home of a family who are disciples of his. They love Jesus. It's a family of siblings. Kids, that means brother and sisters. Two sisters and one brother. Uh the brother is not in this encounter, but there is no reason to doubt that he was not there. Uh their names are Martha, Mary, and Lazarus. Martha and Mary get the bulk of the attention here though. Uh Jesus as the honored guest, he makes himself at home. He sits down and he teaches and disciples, his disciples. Martha, the hostess, probably the oldest, uh she busies herself with food preparation and all the other things of preparation. Mary, the sister, probably younger, she sits at the feet of Jesus and listens to him teach. Martha soon grows irritated with Mary. Selfish Mary. And then she goes to Jesus and implores him to tell her sister to help in serving. Jesus gently rebukes Martha and commends Mary. That's the encounter. This is what we learn. Here's our lesson for tonight. Jesus honors those who prioritize his word. Let's say that again. Jesus honors those who prioritize his word. In other words, he is pleased with those who keep pursuing him as the great priority of their lives. Now, I have grown up in church and I've heard a number of messages on Mary and Martha and Jesus. Let me just say for the record here at the very beginning, this is not Mary, good, Martha, bad. No, these are both good disciples of Jesus. They love him, but one of them is distracted from Jesus and his word. Martha, in her zeal to do for Jesus, failed for a time to be with Jesus. Three individuals in this encounter, Martha are Mary, Martha, and Jesus. There is an action I want to highlight with each one of these three individuals. Here is the order. We're going to look at it. Mary devotes herself to Jesus. Martha distracts herself from Jesus. And then Jesus elevates himself above all things. So now you know the message. Now you know the encounter. Let's dive in. It's good stuff. Number one, Mary devotes herself to Jesus. It, what we find Mary doing is the supreme priority for all who belong to Jesus. In fact, in verse number 42, Jesus will say, what Mary is doing is the one necessary and needful thing for his own. Now, many people accuse preachers, probably rightly so, that we use the superlative, you English majors, we use the superlative far too often. I I probably doesn't happen here, but I know I'm guilty of this. Uh you uh if you listen closely, you're going to hear it all the times that I I speak. You know, you you go to church, let's say, one Sunday and 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 a preacher gets up and he says, folks, this is the greatest priority for your life. And you write that down, the greatest priority. I mean, there's a lot of priorities, but this is the greatest one. You write down. The next week you come and the preacher says, folks, let me tell you the number one thing you need to remember. And it's something completely different. And you think, well, it was the, that was the greatest. This is the number one. What the two different, what's going on? Forgive us. We get excited about the Bible. Sometimes we're not very precise in our language, but Jesus is precise. And when the Lord of all eternity claims something to be the single greatest priority and the single greatest responsibility that the Christian must pursue, we do well to pay attention. This is the one needful thing according to Jesus. And what is that? It's what Mary is doing. In fact, let me quote the great Baptist pastor from the 19th century, Charles Spurgeon. He he defined what the one needful thing was. He said in a sermon in 1871, quote, "The one thing needful evidently is that which Mary chose. If anything be plain at all in holy scripture, it is most clear that this is the one thing needful, to sit at Jesus' feet and hear his word. This and nothing less, this and nothing more." What is the one needful thing? What Mary is doing, sitting at the feet of Jesus and listening to him. In fact, Jesus says something quite similar in Mark 12, verses 28 through 30. One of the scribes came up and said to him, master, which commandment is the most important of all? What was Jesus' response? You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, all your soul, all your mind, all your strength. What do we find Mary doing? We find her loving Jesus with all of her mind, with all of her heart, with all of her strength. She is listening intently to the master. She desires to be as close as possible to him. Where is she physically? At his feet. You can't get much closer. In fact, in verse number 39, it says that she heard his word. The tense of this Greek verb reveals that she was in the state of listening. You say, I don't know what that means. It's not that she is listening to Jesus, but that she kept on listening to Jesus. Like that her mind was not elsewhere. It was right there on the one she loved. Something like a rivet locking two pieces together as one. Her mind was fastened on Jesus as he taught. God is speaking to her. This is the truth as it is in Jesus. This is a moment not to be missed. So what do we see Mary doing? She draws near him to hear him. This is the one needful thing. By the way, that's the heart of true believers. Jesus will say in Luke 6, 47, the believer hears and obeys the word, builds his life on the solid rock. Jesus will say in Luke 8, 21, that his family consists of those who hear and practice the word. Jesus will say in Luke 11, 28, that God's blessing rests on those who hear the word of God and keep it. The Psalm writer will say in Psalm 1, 2, that the righteous one delights in the law of the Lord. Psalm 119, I talked about that one earlier. In verse 161, those who are in a salvation relationship with God, they stand in awe of his word. Is this you? Do you have, like Mary, a devotion and a delight to hear what he says to you? Like the Bereans of Acts 17, do you long to study God's word? Uh like a deer panting for, a thirsty deer panting for the uh water brooks. Do you find your soul thirsty to hear from God? One of the greatest acts of worship is for us to be silent and to listen when God is speaking through his word. You do not ignore the words of the people you love. But sadly, sometimes even the most mature, the best among us, whoever that may be, can find ourselves distracted from Jesus and his word. Mary devotes herself to Jesus. And now let's look at Martha. Martha distracts herself from Jesus. She is distracted from what truly matters. In fact, in verse number 40, we see this word, uh that she is cumbered about. The responsibilities are like a heavy weight on top of her. She is being pulled in every direction. The word cumbered literally is distracted with so many different things. In fact, Jesus, who knows her heart, is going to call her on it. In verse number 41, he says, Martha, you are full of care. You are anxious. You are worried and troubled about many things. He is talking about her inside, that's the anxiety, and the outside, troubled. You are anxious on the inside. You are showing it on the outside. Isn't that always true when other things occupy our minds? Now, let's be loving here to Martha. Why is she so distracted at this moment? She's got a house full of people. Uh currently, as much as we know, if you include her brother, she has at least 15 people, including herself, that she's got to take care of. What an honor to host Jesus and his disciples. She has, by the way, the gift of hospitality. I don't know if you think that Martha shows up all over the Gospels. You know, she only shows up three times. And every time we see Martha, you know what we find out? She has a house full of people every time. According to the custom of the day, uh feet have to be washed, food has to be prepared, drinks need to be uh poured, seats need to be assigned. More than likely, Jesus and the 12 are going to be spending the night. There's no motels. So beds have to be arranged. She is a flurry of activity. And by the way, she's good at it. She enjoys this. This is what she's made for. She's doing this for Jesus. She's busy for Jesus. She's serving Jesus and she's to be commended. Because who is she imitating? Jesus. Is he not the great servant of all? Though he is in the form of God, he did not selfishly hold on to his position as God, but he left the glories of heaven, the throne room of heaven, came to this earth, took upon himself the form of a servant. Was made in the likeness of man. Jesus is servant of all. She loves Jesus. So she's doing what Jesus does, doing it for him. The apostle Paul will tell Timothy in 1 Timothy 5 and verse 10, that hospitality is one of the marks of a godly woman. Peter will take it a step further. And he will say in 1 Peter 4, 9, that hospitality is not just a mark of a godly woman, it is required of every person who loves the gospel. So what we find in Martha, here is a godly woman expending herself for Jesus. A gifted woman using her resources for Jesus, a good woman ministering to Jesus. I'm here to serve you, Jesus. Oh, for more Marthas in the church. And oh for more men who are Marthas in the church. I like Martha. But somewhere along the way, her service for Jesus distracted her from Jesus. And there is the problem. I think it's fair to say, looking at the text, that Martha longed to be where Mary was. Well, I wish I could be sitting down and listening to Jesus. But all these other things aren't going to get done. Therefore, I think it's also fair to say that listening to Jesus wasn't her priority. Serving Jesus was her priority. And that sounds noble. That sounds somehow right, but according to Jesus, her priorities were misplaced. Hey, it is important to serve the Lord Jesus Christ, but listening to him is of first importance. The problem is not serving him. The problem was neglecting him. There is a higher priority than service and ministry for God, and that is drawing near him to hear him. Sadly, it is all too common that our work for Christ drags us away from the word of Christ. Evangelism, counseling, church programs, church events, administration, hospitality, meeting needs, making visits, family ministry, music ministry, maintenance around the church building, caring for the poor, protection for the unborn, advocacy for children, even what I am doing right this very moment, what I am doing preaching. All of these things are vital and crucial in living out our faith. But these works for Christ can so dominate us as to distract us from Christ. They can. They have. They will. When doing for Jesus is a higher priority than being with Jesus, he will soon be forgotten. Ministry will turn into what I'm doing for Jesus rather than a response of worship and gratitude for what he has done for me. You see, when work trumps worship, you soon have a pride problem. That's what happened to Martha. She's not, though she's serving Jesus, who is she really focused on? Herself. What does she say to Jesus? Lord, do you not care that my sister has left me to serve all alone? Can you hear her irritation, her anger? Resentment, envy, self pity? She soon becomes judgy of other people who aren't as committed to serving Jesus as she is. Mary has left me, Jesus. Mary is not helping me advance my ministry for you. Jesus, my work for you wouldn't be failing if Mary would help. Jesus, I would be more efficient. There would be more success. We could advance your name greater if only she would get in the act. Tell her to serve me so I can serve you better. How quickly our ministry for God turns into concern for our reputation and our name and our uh legacy. But have you forgotten that this is actually all about him? So what we find is Mary devotes herself to Jesus and Martha distracts herself from Jesus. So now, let's come to the third and final individual and action. And here's the hero, Jesus. Jesus elevates himself above all things. Here, Jesus lovingly corrects his misguided servant. He says, Martha, and he has to say her name twice. Now, there are various reasons perhaps why she said, why he said her name twice. Uh one way, I think, uh I wonder if, can you just see her? She's bouncing from place to place, room to room, Martha. Martha, Martha, yes, Jesus. He is trying to get her attention. But he says her name twice. You are anxious and upset. Let me remind you of my preeminence. Being with me is of greater importance than anything else in life. Why? Why does he elevate himself above anything else in all things? In this text, I want to give you two reasons and we'll be done. Jesus elevates himself above all things. Number one, because his glory is unique. And secondly, his word is paramount. So here we go. Why does Jesus elevate himself above all things? Well, according to Jesus, his glory is unique. In other words, there's no one else like him. He stands alone. There is no one greater than he. In effect, what Jesus is saying to Martha is this, I am the one needful thing. Your sister is accomplishing the one needful thing, drawing near me to hear me. I am it. My glory, my importance, my weightiness is above everything else. It's unique. Isaiah 44, 6, thus says the Lord, the king of Israel and his redeemer, the Lord of hosts, I am the first, I am the last, beside me there is no God. There in Martha's living room sits the visible representation of the triune God. He is the perfect, beautiful one. There in her living room sits the creator of the cosmos, the sustainer, the redeemer, the savior, the Lord, the king. Psalm 24, he is the king of glory. Psalm 74, he is the king of old. Psalm 102, he is the king of the earth. 1 Timothy 1, 17, he is the king eternal. 1 Timothy 6, 15, he is the king of kings. Revelation 15, 13, he is the king of saints. That's why he can say, there is one thing necessary, and that is to be with me. You know what worship is? Worship is the response we give to the glory of God. Put it another way, when you and I see the importance, the uniqueness, the otherness, the glory of who God is, we respond in worship. We give him our heart, our mind, our attention, our soul. He has the highest priority. He outranks all things. His words deserve our attention. Psalm 96, 4 and verse 5, great is the Lord, greatly to be praised. He is to be feared above all gods, for all the gods of the heathen are idols. The word means worthless idols, but the Lord made the heavens. An idol is is anything that steals your worship from the one true God. And idols are worthless when compared to the glory of God. You know, an idol can be a good thing in other circumstances, but when it is out of priority and Jesus is worth less than the idol, that good thing can become an idol. Idols seem worthy of our worship only in the absence of God's glory. But when the glory of God is seen, things get put right and that idol is seen as worth less than the glory of God. I'm so glad that you are here tonight. I know others would long to be here as well on this Monday night. But you were able to come and I think that's wonderful, but I find it fascinating that as a pastor, I have heard in my lifetime so many reasons why so and so is not going to be at church this Sunday. And let's set aside for a moment all the unavoidable things of life, and that will happen. The unavoidable work conflict, the unavoidable uh thing that God brings in, the last minute change, the sickness, the out of town, you understand. But in those things, in those events that happen, where you actually do have a choice, how many of us look at that and say, well, I have a conflict between this event and coming to hear from God? and coming to hear from God. Well, obviously, I can't miss this event." And what gets put out of priority is drawing near to hear Him. It's not that we don't love Jesus. It's not that we don't find our hearts drawn to Jesus. It's just in that moment, you are counting something as worth more than Jesus. And it seems like a valuable use of our time because we don't get the uniqueness of Jesus, the greatness of Jesus, the overwhelming superiority of Jesus. In that moment, it seems a valuable use of your time because we don't see who Jesus is. Oh, but when we see Jesus as He truly is, the other events of life are worth less than Him. The old hymn says, "Turn your eyes upon Jesus. Look full in His wonderful face; the things of earth will grow strangely dim in the light of His glory and grace." Why does Jesus elevate Himself above all things? Because His glory is unique. But secondly, He also is going to point out that His Word is paramount. Another big word, His Word is number one. Now, it appears that Mary had actually been serving earlier. There's nothing wrong with serving. It's noble and right. See, how do you know that? Because Martha points out, "Mary has left me to serve alone." So apparently, Mary was already serving. But Mary makes a decision. She chooses to listen to Jesus. Martha makes a decision. She chooses to lecture Jesus. "Make my sister work." And Jesus declares, "Mary has chosen the good part." Literally, Mary has chosen what is best, Martha. And I'm not going to take it away from her. I'm not going to tell her to get up and serve Me. She's drawing near Me to hear Me. She's chosen what's best. Drawing near Him to hear His word is paramount. It is the one needful thing. That's what the Lord Jesus says. The King David said that all the way back in Psalm 27, verse 4. "One thing have I desired of the Lord, or asked of the Lord, that I will seek after, that I may dwell in the house of the Lord all the days of my life and gaze upon His beauty and inquire at His holy temple." According to David, his one passion was to be ever nearer to the Lord that he might have his questions answered from God. What about the Apostle Paul? Philippians 3:13 and 14, "But this one thing I do. Forgetting those things that are behind, reaching for the things that are before, I press toward the mark for the prize and the high calling of God in Christ Jesus." What is the prize he's talking about? It is to be perfectly like Jesus one day. So according to the apostle, his one thing, his one pursuit was every day, draw a little bit closer to Jesus, that I may learn more of Him. You begin to see, this is the one needful thing. The Word is paramount. When I say the Word, I do mean the written Word, but I also mean the incarnate Word, the Word made flesh, Jesus Himself. Would you agree with me that Satan, the enemy, has many weapons to keep us from Jesus and His Word? A lot of good weapons that he uses. But I think the most effective weapon Satan uses might just be the simplest weapon, distraction. Today, in the United States of America, we have more access to the Word in the English language than any generation in history has had combined. I'm just talking about the English language, which is what we speak. According to Guinness, the Bible is still the world's best-selling and most widely distributed book. You can download any number of free apps on the Bible. And these apps have a dizzying array of Bible-reading programs on them. You can find Bibles on phones, online, in hotel rooms, at county fairs, at rescue missions, in homes, at inaugurations, in courthouses. You go to my apartment back in Reno. I have two shelves full of just the Bibles I own, not even counting all that my children and my wife own. In the United States of America, the Bible is ubiquitous. Word of the day. It means it's everywhere. It's pervasive. It's inexpensive. It's available. It is literally at your fingertips. Yet I believe Americans are the most biblically illiterate. This generation of Americans, our generations of Americans are the most biblically illiterate of any other time in our history. Why is that? Is it because it's illegal for us to own and read a Bible? Are we fearful of someone coming in and arresting us for owning a Bible? Why is it that people all over southern Indiana are so unaware and ignorant of what the Bible says? Why is it that many Christians are this? "Like hapless fish distracted by a shiny object, we have been lured away by trivialities." YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, Pinterest, Twitter, Tumblr, Reddit, Snapchat, TikTok, Disney Plus, Netflix, Amazon, Hulu, apps, apps, apps. We consume hours on these electronic platforms. What would the churches of America be like? What would this church be like if we spent the same amount of time reading the Bible? What would our world be like if we spent the same amount of hours as we do in the Bible, as we do on those other platforms? I even talked about things like novels and sports and the stock market, iTunes, Sirius XM, online shopping, fitness, hobbies, whatever is in your life and mine. Welcome to life in the 21st century where the Word is being left behind. We have the Bible. But we're distracted. I call on you to repent of the trivialities and the misplaced priorities in your life and return the Word to its rightful place. And everything else will fit in after that. Stop being distracted from Jesus. Start being distracted by Jesus. But I close with this. "You will never, you will never draw near Him if He had not first drawn near to you." You see, because of our sin, we are separated very far from the Lord. There is a great chasm between us and a holy God. And so God bridged the gap through the death of Jesus Christ. His blood shed for us when we believe in that. It draws us near Him by the blood of Jesus Christ. He pays our debt. And if you have never received Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior, would you tonight receive His death for you? Would you come to Him tonight and say, "God, I am a sinner. I have sinned. I not only do wrong, I am wrong. I am on the other team." "I cannot get to you unless you come to Me. So Jesus, do for me what I can't do for myself. Take away my sin. Make me right with You. And you will find that as Jesus Christ comes into your life and cleanses you and saves you and washes you clean of your sin, you will be brought near to God by the blood of Jesus. And so every day of your life, out of gratitude, you will turn and say, 'Lord, because You have come to Me, I now draw near You so that I may hear You.'" Jesus honors those who prioritize His Word. Will you, Father? In Jesus' name, thank you very much for the Scripture. I thank you for the blood of Jesus. And I pray for those without Christ that You would draw them and save them. And for those of us who are already saved, may we evaluate the distractions in our life and reprioritize what we must for the sake and glory of Your name. Amen.
Thank you for coming. You're dismissed.